Merchants Bank for the benefit of Winona Volunteer Services. This is the 25th year and just want to alert everybody that that's coming up and it's a great benefit. We have people that are hungry in this community, not just during the first 10 days of December, but year round, and cash is as good as food items, so keep that event in mind. Along the same line, the Holiday Train will be in Winona on December 11th, I believe at 5:00 at the Historic Depot. That's always a great event and big crowds turn out for that and bring food items to share and there'll be more, I'm sure, in the news about that, just giving you the dates. That's all I had. City manager?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Porzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is the Andring rezoning. It is currently R1 and B3 and the proposal is to R2.
Public hearing, a third of the public hearing open and Carlos, just comment.
Evening council members, mayor. I just have a quick presentation here for the rezoning to go through what was presented in your council packets. The Andring rezoning concerns a property at 1670 West Fifth Street. That property is generally in the center of this photo right here, as was mentioned by Monica, the city clerk. Currently, the properties are split zoned in B3 zoning and surrounded by R1 zoning. The proposal is for rezoning the property that's currently split zoned from that B3/R1 split zoning to make the entire piece of property R2. One of the petitioners for the rezoning is actually the adjacent neighbor just to the east here. That neighbor is in a purchase agreement with the current owners of this property to purchase that property contingent upon the rezoning and other things that need to be worked out for the real estate transaction to go through. Part of the rezoning request is this property owner's desire to reestablish a triplex rental use on the property while also ensuring that there is not future commercial development on the property, thus requesting the R2 zoning. Some history of 1670 West Fifth Street. The existing B3 zoning was likely based upon the use of a grocery store when the zoning was first applied to the property in 1960. The grocery store use continued until 1966 when the building was turned into rental units. Between 1966 and 2007, the building on the property at 1670 West Fifth was used for three to four unit rental and in 2007, it was converted into an owner occupied dwelling. So at that time, it lost its grandfathered rental status. So now the property must comply with zoning requirements to reestablish the triplex rental use on the property. Again, the rezoning request comes in part from the neighbors adjacent to the property and also again, the neighbors have a purchase agreement for the property. It's their intent to reestablish the triplex on the property at 1670 West Fifth, but also ensure that commercial development does not occur on the property and as a result, the R2 zoning is being requested. Staff's analysis found that there was no error in the original zoning of the property. Development patterns in the neighborhood have remained stable. The potential uses of the R2 district are not expected to result in undue hardship to adjacent properties. Rather, the retention of the existing B3 zoning district could result in such impacts through establishment of a commercial use in a residential area. Fourth, rezoning promotes stability in the neighborhood. And finally, spot zoning is not evident and the request complies with the Comprehensive Plan's traditional neighborhood designation for the property at 1670 West Fifth. Given the findings of staff's analysis, staff fully supports the rezoning request to R2. On October 28th, the Planning Commission voted unanimously in support of the rezoning request and after the public hearing tonight, if council occurs with the commission's recommendations, the ordinance in your package should be introduced for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Is there anybody here wishes to speak to this issue? State your name and address.
My name is Steven Peterson, attorney here in Winona, and I represent Ralph Andrew, who is deceased, by way of spokesperson, Michael Andrew and Charles Andrew. And I also represent Chris Rothler and his daughter, Jennifer Gose. Chris Rothler and his daughter are purchasers who were referred to by the address of Winona. The parcel involved is actually three separate parcels. We have lots 16 and 17, which happen to be owned by Ralph Andrew, excuse me, who's deceased, as well as Michael Andrew. They own that what we call patent inheritance. The third parcel is what we call the Meads and Bones parcel. We started the point and then we flow around to the back and the point of beginning. That parcel is actually owned by Ralph Andrew and the Diggs Wood. So we have west, east, if you will, lot 16, lot 17, and then the Meads and Bones parcel. And as we as well as pointed out, we do have a split zone situation here, lot 16 and 17 and so on, B3, which we would find on a far in the least restricted commercial zone will have the Meads and Bones parcel, excuse me, is on R1. And we're seeking to have the entire property rezoned to R2. So in essence, what we have is a done zoning, if you will, taking the B3 and changing it into R2 and taking the R1 and adding one or two. A little bit of history as to why we come back to this position. Historically, lots 16 and lots 17 and the Meads and Bones parcel were not in common ownership. In 1948, the board which acquired lots 16, at some point after that, the grocery store was established. But when they had the grocery store in lot 16, they did not hold lot 17 or the Meads and Bones parcel. It wasn't until 1965 when we had a common owner for all three parcels combined, acquired by Sophia Graffner. And as our understanding, though, Sophia Graffner, that converted the grocery store into a residential situation with multi units in it. And Ralph Andrew actually acquired the property in 1978. So it's only been since, actually, 1965, we had a single owner of all three parcels. Carlos very well summarized the whole situation. I don't really have any additional comments. I would point out that Carlos did, that city staff fully recommends this planning commission to be managed, not a well-known president. We believe it's very appropriate for the neighborhood. The entire neighborhood, the landlord of this street or this property is located in small, uh, lot, with a big section on the swing, small area of B3. It certainly makes sense. It's been a residential neighborhood for years and years and years. We fully expect it to remain a residential neighborhood in the future. And this drift, and this common owner, one of the purchasers, Mr. Rothler, has put that concern in property. And we have one petition submitted and telling the council that one of his obligations with his daughter buying the property is to maintain that area as a residential property rather than having possible property that somebody buying the property for commercial use, which was really not too consistent with the entire neighborhood, for years and years, and it still exists in the future. If you have any questions, I think we're going to have to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Peterson?
Thank you.
I guess not, thank you. Anybody else here wish to speak to the issue? Anybody else wish to speak? Last time, anybody wish to speak? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and council.
I'd move to approve the attached ordinance, or to recite.
Motion by Michelle.
I would second that.
So anybody, Pam, further discussion? Al?
Question from our city attorney. Since this is a zoning issue, does it require any majority vote or other than just a simple majority?
All as necessary is a simple majority.
Thank you. Just a comment I remember well, grew up in that neighborhood, or at least for part of my young life, and well remember the Kosek Grocery Store. And I think this is a very good move on the part of Mr. Rothler and it will serve the neighborhood in that area very well with this zoning change.
Thank you. Any other comments? George?
Just one question. If so, how many single family homes could be built on those parcels?
Once combined, all the parcels, part of this is combining all the parcels into one, would support one single family home. I'd have to take a look at the size of the lot to see if you could go back and split it up again and put two single family houses on there, but the intent with this is to combine everything into one parcel.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Carrie's.
Under the petitions, requests and communications, item 3.1 is a request for street closure by Amor Set during the SciTech facility upgrade in late February to late March. I'd move to approve that request.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Further discussion?
Just a question. I assume emergency services folks will be notified of the street closure as appropriate when it happens?
Actually, council member, they'll probably have one lane left.
Oh, they will have one lane open, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 3.2 is an agreement for the former Chula Vista. Mr. Vahid Sabadi, the property owner, is requesting that the city council waive the city ordinance requiring property taxes be paid in fall prior to the issuance of a liquor license. And we have a draft agreement with him for the payment of the delinquent property taxes.
My understanding that he's made the November 11th payment of $3,000?
That is correct. That was received by the county on November 12th.
What's the total delinquency or the total indebtedness?
Thirty-eight thousand, I think. Was it?
Yeah, there's approximately thirty thousand is the balance.
Keeps going down. Try ask it again, it might get to be an easier vote.
My understanding is that the property owner, the tenant, was to pay the property taxes and the property owner was not aware they weren't being paid until the property became, got in trouble and then he was made aware of it and sort of stuck with this.
I understand that, but I think we may be opening a window here that's going to be difficult to close. Every year, we have property, we have hearings from landlords who didn't know that their tenant did not pay their utility bills and then we're saying, well, you were in the business, you should have known, and then we pass that on to them. So, but I know this is somewhat of a quandary. I'm going to go against it unless somebody wants to come up with a percentage or a lower amount, but forgive the entire amount, I believe is, or forgiving that amount would be difficult to do.
Well, we're not forgiving it, we're just allowing, giving him time to pay it.
How much time?
Six months.
Maybe I should have read that best.
It would require all of the 2012 and 2013 taxes to be paid prior to the renewals next June.
We've given him one year to make up everything.
Six months.
Six months.
And if he doesn't have it all paid, then the liquor license will...
Then the council can decide next spring or next summer whether to renew or not.
In the meantime, he's paying a hefty penalty on these late payments and in talking to the property owner, I know that he has every intention of paying this off as soon as possible and not taking the full six months if possible. I believe he's represented here, I don't know if there's anybody, would you like to... Sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
Oh, I think it even says on here that if he is delinquent more than 15 days, the city clerk can have an automatic revocation of his license. So he's, that's what it says in the agreement. So I think he's obviously, he's going to sign this term and to get it paid.
I have some sympathy for the guy. It isn't like he's just somebody that wasn't paying his property taxes and now wants to have time to pay them. I think he was genuinely believing that his agreement with the tenant that these property taxes were being taken care of.
I appreciate the clarification.
Is there anything you would like to say on behalf of the property owner?
I would briefly, thank you. Just to clarify, the, first of all, the total home and property taxes for 2012 and 13 that are currently delinquent is $35,238.87. The proposal is to repay the delinquent taxes over a period of six months as has been noted with $3,000 initial payment, as already been made. Mr. Sabadi has in fact already signed the agreement, he is intent on carrying forward the agreement, performing the agreement. As I think Ms. Alexander pointed out, the agreement as drafted does allow the city to administratively revoke the liquor license in the amount of payment is not for his delinquency or whatever. So, and again, as always, the reason the taxes are unpaid are because it was the tenant's responsibility to pay the taxes. Now, of course, it can be said that perhaps the landlord should have done a little bit more vigilante and I think the landlord has in fact learned a difficult lesson here. But in fact, the landlord was not the party most responsible for paying the taxes. And this taking step to his root and then the owner mentioned discussing that again. And on behalf of Mr. Sabadi, I would ask the council to reconsider the agreement.
Thank you. Pam?
As I recall, the city council heard the previous owner of, the owner of Chula Vista here, I believe we, he was requesting an extension for his liquor license at that time. That was just a few months ago. Is there any way that at that time, we, the city council could have picked up on the fact that the, that the taxes had not been paid?
That was the tenant, not the owner. And he was aware, but I think he was the one that caused the problem, if I'm understanding the situation correctly.
Yes. But he applied for, he applied for an extension for his liquor license because he'd had a fire. Could the city not have understood at that point that the property taxes had not been paid?
Mayor and council, the extension was to have the property taxes paid. It had nothing to do with the fire. It was because the taxes were not paid, as at the end of June, the council gave him three more months until the end of September to pay the property taxes, at which time they weren't paid. So he had to relinquish the license and after that time, he closed the restaurant.
I did not recall that it was so that much money. That's where I'm having a disjoint here. That's all right.
Well, mayor and council, the ordinance requires the previous year's taxes to be paid. So when we were in the renewal period in June, we were looking at the delinquent 2012 taxes and that he was supposed to pay the 2012 taxes by the end of September. Now that we're past both the due dates for 2013, we're requiring a payment plan for both 2012 and 13 so that next spring during the renewal, we don't have a large unpaid property taxes.
Thank you.
Other questions? George?
Are the utility bills all up to date? Do we know?
The final reading on the water bill was taken the end of October. He then has 30 days to make that payment. That would be the previous tenant. So at this point, it's still during that 30-day payment period.
If there's a penalty if he doesn't pay his utility bills.
Point of information. What is the process if someone does not pay the property taxes for, to secure the property?
Mayor, council, the, to secure the property, like it goes tax forfeited?
Yep.
It's a substantial period of time before that happens. I think it's over about a five-year period before it goes tax forfeited. So it's a substantial period. In this particular case, you know, this agreement sets out a fairly defined period in which the property taxes have to be paid. If they're not paid, the city can administratively revoke the liquor license, so, and I think it's already been stated, the, I think the tenant related to Chula Vista, when you initially looked at this, the disclosure at that time was that it was a landlord's responsibility to pay the taxes. And what we found out after the fact was that in fact, lease agreements required the tenant to pay the property taxes and that did not happen.
I'd move to approve the agreement.
I'll second that. Michelle, seconded by Paul. Further discussion?
Mayor, I do have a few comments on this. So I've looked at this, you know, in the beginning, it was said and stated that, that property taxes were to be paid by the tenant. I've spoken to the tenant, the previous tenant, and he indicated that he was unsure at the time as to who the responsible party was and that he had a difficult time contacting the owner after a previous owner sold the property. And so I, you know, whether or not who was responsible, I think is kind of a moot point here because we're dealing with a liquor license and that relates obviously to the property taxes. But I think because we're dealing with a liquor license, which is our responsibility as a council, I think by accepting this payment schedule, we're saying perhaps other liquor license holders might be at some point in time coming before us. And granted, we judge things on an individual basis, but I'd rather not give this much time to, to bring these property taxes up to date and go forward with the liquor license. I would assume a much shorter period, in fact, a three-month period instead of a six-month period to get these property taxes current so we can move forward. So therefore, I'm not going to vote to support this motion.
Other comments?
I think there's some extenuating circumstances that this pyramid itself with the fire and other issues and I think that one of the things we don't want to do is see a vacant piece of property. And if we can get it back into a position of where it's generating revenue for owners and getting us paid off, that's the better course of action to take.
And jobs as well.
And jobs as well.
Other comments? Questions? We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Is that two? Okay. Motion carries.
Item 3.3 is an appointment to the Planning Commission of Mandy Olson. The term would be November 19th through October 31st, 2016.
Move to approve the appointment. Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? George?
Is this person replacing Brohmack, Jim Brohmack?
Yes.
Okay.
Who chose not to stand. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the Airport Runway 2012-30 Reconstruction Change Order Number One.
Move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? George?
Do we have an explanation of this one here?
Thank you, mayor and council. This, as the design process goes through, clarity is brought out in the interpretation of the FAA mandates, requirements, and the runway, the taxiway does not have to be as far away from the runway as originally anticipated, so it'll be 25 feet. So if it's been 325 feet away, it'll be only 300 feet away, so that saves some on the construction costs. But the larger cost is actually on the east end of the runway. The original thought was that the, some fill would have to go into that nice wetland area off to the east and now with the new interpretation of the design standards, no fill has to go into that, which would have required digging of wetland off to the west end of the runway. That digging no longer has to occur. We still have to do some fill off of the west end in the gravel pit and for that, we had to mitigate wetlands and buy them somewhere else. So those are the changes process.
Other questions? We had a motion, right? Okay. Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.2 is a state agreement for airport improvements.
I would move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.3 is a certification of completion, final estimate, resolution of acceptance for Lake Park Bike Path reconstruction.
My understanding is there's still some expenses out there, so the difference here is not necessarily, you know, what it is today. It could change. Is that right?
This is the, this is the issue with the contractor. There still are some additional expenses that we have yet to, to pay and are yet to be incurred. But this, you'll notice that the work that was done by Dun Blacktop is significantly less than the original contract.
I would move to approve the attached resolution. Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.4 is to reestablish the City Board of Equalization.
Move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? You should all go through this training sometime. Right, George?
I should all sit before the Board of Adjust Equalization, too. That's always an interesting experience as well.
Stimulating.
But necessary.
Some of us like property issues. Is that right?
Well, it was actually more interesting than I thought it was going to be, but I felt sorry for the woman teaching it. George?
Yeah, just a question, if Monica or whoever, if you could just explain what this board, what its purpose is.
Sure. This is the Appeal Board for those property owners who believe the assessed value of their property is not correct. They first can come to the City Board of Equalization with their concerns and that would be held in April of each year.
Like I say, I know as the mayor mentioned, Al, and I know you were on there, I had an opportunity to serve on it, yes, it's very interesting, so.
Well, we, we get good advice from our county assessor, Steve Hacken. Very good. He's always present there, too.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Start with Al.
Thank you, mayor. I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and happy Hanukkah or happy Thanksgivingukkah, if I can pronounce that right, anyway, because they both occur on the same day. That's it.
Jerry?
Ever since that recent letter to the editor about the signage at Wyndham Park, I've received a couple of phone calls, so if that's something we may want to readdress, I know it's, signs serve a purpose, but maybe, and I know we have limitations, but if we could maybe look at that again, it seems to be a buzz again and for whatever reason, once somebody points it back out, those signs seem to get larger.
I don't think you were at the last meeting, but I did ask city staff to take a look at that and come back to us with a report.
Good, thanks.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Paul?
I would also like to address the idea of signage, not just in Wyndham Park, but also appropriate signage in residential areas that is indicating business practices that may not be under code and that we take a look at that and make sure that everybody is aware of what the process is if they want to sign up on their residential property promoting their business.
Pam?
I just would like to remind everyone that the Winona Art Walk is this weekend, so we have, we have six different locations in downtown. we have, we have six different locations in downtown Winona that are going to be hosting people who would like to come out and see the work of some of the wonderful artists in Winona. And that'll be from 10 o'clock in the morning until four in the afternoon on Saturday, and I hope the weather's great, so we can walk.
So the sun's supposed to be out, so.
All right.
George?
Okay, thank you. Judy, if you were Chad, as it was in the paper here last week about the books at the library being sold and all that, and whatever, how it all, how it all formulated, if you were Chad could just inform the council as to what all took place there, you know, why it happened, and all those things.
We are preparing a report, and we will have it this week.
Okay, thank you very much on that. Also, for, as we talk about businesses and things happening, I've had a lot of people ask me in regards to the expansion down in the east end of Winona. If you get a chance, you drive east of Louisa Street, you'll see the fairly new Miller Ingenuity. Their project is just about complete, and Barron's, they're beginning construction. RTP behind Peerless Chain is beginning construction, and it's all about creating jobs, paying property taxes, and making our city a better place to live economically. And Judy, would this help at all with all these businesses expanding as far as trying to proceed with our mission on getting the Louisa Street extension? I think this would help quite a bit as well.
I certainly hope it helps. We'll certainly use it as part of our argument.
Yes, so like I say, a lot of things down there, so you'll see a lot of heavy equipment and things moving. And also, congratulations to a young man, Tim Oldstead, from Winona. We always talk about tourism, you know, bringing people to Winona, but Tim Oldstead is taking Winona to the national stage there on the X Factor, so congratulations to Tim, and let's hope he continues to move on. And he's a very good young man, and he's certainly representing our city very, very well. Is it best to give birthday greetings before your birthday or after?
Before.
Before, okay, thank you, because I'm going to do one before. Happy 21st birthday to Peter Burgess. Nice young man, always willing to volunteer, and I believe this weekend he will be celebrating his 21st birthday, so happy birthday to him, and of course, many, many more, and also to all of us. And on one sad note, condolences to the families of Raymond and George McElmery on the passing of their mother, Irene, who left us at the age of 100. And I'm sure she would have many, many stories that she could really share with us that we would really find very interesting. So condolences to that family as they move on, so, and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there's one item, the approval of the minutes from October 25th and November 4th.
Move to approve the consent.
Item by Al, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of the journey. Say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.
Tonight, we're going to put $10 each hand.